We're going to be seated just for a moment. I am going to go to our city attorney for a motion and we're going to start a new tradition tonight that Councilman Edmondson will so move.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, at this time it would be appropriate for a motion to move that this public body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, Subparagraph 1, Revised Statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including litigation, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed. And, Your Honor, the open meeting will resume at 6:00 PM.
And I would like to make that appropriate motion, Your Honor.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay. Oops, I'm sorry. Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We will now be excused at executive conference room for an executive session. We will now resume the regular session of the August 21st, 2017 Blue Springs City Council meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent. There are items that need to be pulled if not accept a motion for approval.
Send move.
A second. Well, let's roll call.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on a code amendment related to the Unified Development Code.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated August 15, 2017 from Community Development Director Scott Allen with the following attachments. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, or I'm sorry, with affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 29, 2017, and UDC text amendment application form, and Bill Number 4510 approving the amendments. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Council members. Good this evening. Bringing before you from staff and through the various commissions that have reviewed it up to this point, some requested Unified Development Code amendments. Just as a bit of a brief background, again, the current Unified Development Code, or UDC, was adopted by City Council in August of 2015, was made effective October of 2015. So, we've been operating under the UDC for the last two years, and we've come through with a few rounds of modifications and updates since that point, and we were doing that about twice a year. At this point, we've kind of slowed down a little bit, looking at approximately just once a year coming through, depending on the need to make any amendments to what's already existing in the UDC. With that, again, as noted, there were a few boards and commissions that have reviewed this up to this point. Downtown Review Board, at the end of March, made a recommendation for approval specific to an item I'll mention here shortly. Development Advisory Commission, or DAC, also recommended approval. And then, just last week, Planning Commission also recommended approval on all of those for unanimous recommendations. So, just walking through those, there are just really six amendments. Say that they're not major, but rather minor in their changes, but hopefully they do provide some additional flexibility and usefulness out of the current or new code. So, with that, I'll just walk through those real briefly, and certainly if there are any questions afterwards. The first is referencing roof mount equipment. We've gotten a few existing, primarily, existing commercial buildings that have been modifying the rooftop equipment and have needed to adhere to the current code, which refers to roof screens, and talking about coordinating with the building to maintain a unified appearance. It's very generic in nature, so we looked at some neighboring communities. This one was fashioned after our CLEES Summit, and hopefully, again, expanding this section makes it a little bit more imperative upon the building owner to design something a little bit more substantial in nature when it comes to rooftop screens. There is some discretion there with staff to review that and approve that, but it is really trying to emphasize some structural improvements, or architectural improvements to the building, rather than just putting up a standard, you know, metal screen or something like that you may be seeing with the current renovated buildings. So, hopefully, that's an improvement, obviously, to the code. Item number two is simply making a reference back to the DAC, and really making sure we're acknowledging that they are tied into the UDC as well, and not just the municipal code as a whole, but specifically to the UDC and making recommendations for its modifications as relates to the development community. Number three is simply one of those typos. Obviously, a side yard setback of 10 inches, really should have been 10 feet, so hopefully that was an easy fix there. Some of those typos are scribbler errors. We can sometimes just clean those up, but since we were coming through with all these other modifications, we simply put this one in here just to really solidify the fact that we would need to make this appropriate edits. Number four is the one that the Downtown Review Board reviewed back at the end of March. This was through their downtown design manual or design standards that they've brought forward to the City Council at that time for a resolution. We did make mention at that point that they were going to come back through, or we were going to come back through with this modification to the UDC to allow EFIS, more specifically called exterior insulation and finish systems, again, EFIS is the acronym, to allow that as part of the masonry, stucco, stone, and such materials that would be allowed in the downtown area. Again, since the Downtown Development Code was adopted 10 years ago, there have been some improvements to the construction and use of EFIS, so this, again, was from the development community requesting that EFIS be allowed in the downtown area. Number five, again, is one of those more basic cleanups. We now have, are operating under the structure of planned due developments and planned residential overlays, PUDs and PROs, as one cohesive PD or planned development. So, that's simply, again, a textual change there. Number six is maybe the more substantial in terms of its application. You may recall that we have a standard of 35% driveway coverage for the front yard of residences, with certain exceptions for cul-de-sac lots and other provisions for the width of garage doors, so on and so forth, up to 50%. For simplicity's sake, and again, based on a lot of application of the 35% rule, with the 50% rule with exceptions, staff is simply recommending to cut through all that and just have a cross-the-board 50% coverage provision. So, again, it's, it looks simple, but it's, hopefully, it'll be pretty agreeable in its application throughout the city. Along with that, there is still, we included additional restriction that it's not a free-for-all in terms of how it connects to the public right-of-way, so driveway widths would still be limited to, and specified here as 30 feet within the right-of-way. So, your driveway apron from the street could not be wider than 30 feet. From there, you could expand up to 50% of your front yard. So, again, with the new developments, really having three-car garages and other additions to, you know, patios, pads, and such with existing residential areas, we saw that 50% coverage really being more appropriate, and 35% being a lot more restrictive in a negative way for residential development here in the city. Finally, just as a note, number seven, I know this is, has come up again with the recent heavy rains, the concept of fugitive mud, and more specifically, construction site standards is something that staff is researching right now with our city attorney, and, again, we look to have that as kind of the next round of edits coming before you here, hopefully sooner rather than later. So, with that, again, all those boards and commissions, as previously noted, have unanimously recommended approval for you this evening. Now, stand for any questions.
Is there any questions? Seeing none from the council. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Before we have the introduction of Ring of Bill 4510, we'll go to our Senate Attorney for an explanation.
Your Honor and council members, in the ordinance that is for Bill Number 4510, there were three typographical or scribblers errors, and they were not substantial. I have provided each member with a copy of the corrected ordinance, and I don't believe a motion is in order to amend it.
Is there a motion to amend?
No.
Can I have it introduced?
We do not.
Would you say we don't need to amend?
We do not.
I thought you said we need to amend. Got to get my hearing together. Okay. Introduction, then. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4510, an ordinance amending Section 407, 090, H1, screening of equipment roof, adding Section 402, 070, Development Advisory Commission; Section 405, 030, non-residential building type standards, small commercial buildings; Section 404, 240, L, Downtown Development Code, building materials; Section 404, 090, through 404, 110, D4, two-family and multifamily performance design standards, limited building types; Section 407, 020, D2, single and two-family residential driveway coverage of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4510, an ordinance amending Section 407, 090, H1, screening of equipment roof, adding Section 402, 070, Development Advisory Commission; Section 405, 030, non-residential building type standards, small commercial buildings; Section 404, 240, L, Downtown Development Code, building materials; Section 404, 090, through 404, 110, D4, two-family and multifamily performance design standards, limited building types; Section 407, 020, D2, single and two-family residential driveway coverage of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4679.
Next, we have a combined public hearing on Item Six, which is rezoning the villas at the Parkway, and Item Eight, which is planned development concept plan for the villas at the Parkway.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record for the rezoning. City Council information form dated August 15, 2017 from Community Development Director Scott Allen with the following attachments. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 29, 2017, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV, Land Use Section, Code, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, comprehensive plan by reference, preliminary illustrative plan and building elevations, and Bill Number 4511 approving the rezoning. For the planned development concept plan, we have the following exhibit. City Council information form dated August 15, 2017 from Community Development Director Scott Allen with the following attachments. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location maps, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 29, 2017, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV, Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, concept plan, illustrative plan and building elevations, and Bill Number 4512 approving the planned development concept plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor, and council members. Came before you this evening is a request to rezone and also approve a planned development concept plan for the villas at the Parkway, which, again, is part of the overall Adams Dairy Parkway senior development. Again, touching on the rezoning at first, you can see here on the map, the site in question, the purple, that's the overall site of the project. The purple area to the north is the area where the applicant is looking to rezone that from SO, just Service Office in the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district, to MF10 in the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district. So, that's the area in question here for the rezoning. The overall site generally is what's been included as part of the planned development concept plan. So, start with the rezoning just briefly. Again, it is currently the Service Office, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district, as well as a portion there in red, which is GB, General Business, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district, looking to rezone it to MF10, which is the low-density, multifamily residential in the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district. Again, there are two properties in question, and I can show those here shortly as we get into the planned development concept plan discussion, but the area in question primarily is all the area here you see in the site, trying to rezone the existing property all to one consistent MF10 zoning. So, again, as showed you, the purple, which is the SO, I should, again, the outline there is really the area in question to rezone all of that to MF10. So, with all those words, hopefully, it's fairly straightforward, the request here to bring the entire site into compliance, along with adding in the portions that are under consideration for the planned development concept plan. With that, I'll jump over to that concept plan. And, again, now, the orientation here is, north is on the right, with the west being, and Napoleon being the top of the page there. So, again, this is the whole site in question, kind of the darker outlined area are the areas that are being added to the overall PUD. And, again, as noted, in the last public hearing, PUDs and PROs have been combined into one PD concept plan, so that's why you're seeing a PUD being considered as a PD this time around. So, with that, can show here briefly, again, the whole site being rezoned to one MF10 zoning, but the planned development concept plan really including the north site and then the south lot here as well, adding in villa units. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of both the rezoning and the PD concept plan, with several conditions of the PD concept plan. Two I want to highlight in particular are conditions Number Five and Nine, and those relate to, Number Five, is it, find it here, being setback reductions, and that's primarily related to the south lot because of the configuration. As you can see, there aren't the typical four or more boundaries or property lines. There are only three, since there is the pi shape there, and therefore, there are some limitations in terms of where the setbacks are going to be a little bit more reduced because of the configuration. With that, the applicant has identified what setbacks would be, and that would be reducing those to 15-foot interior setback along the north property boundary, and 22-foot interior setback along the east property boundary, again, 22 there, and 15 in this area. The other item, again, is condition Number Nine, and that has to do with private sidewalk and driveway improvements connecting everything, and that, again, is what you're seeing here. As you can see, there is no real direct connection off of Napoleon except through the main building as it stands now. So, there are these interior connections that really are critical to connecting all of the project altogether into one contiguous project. So, again, with that, I can certainly respond to any questions, but those are some of the primary conditions I wanted to point out. Again, I'll hopefully stand for any questions. Applicant is present, should there be any at that time.
Councilman Kayler.
What, and what's going to happen to the Adams Dairy Building that's presently on that property? And isn't that, or my understanding, was it on the historic part? Deal building?
Your Honor and Councilman Kayler, I do not believe the building is a historic building in terms of any kind of register or inventory, but I'll defer to the applicant for a further explanation of what they're planning to do with the building.
Yes, I'm Scott Almond with SWD.
Let's be sworn in.
Sorry, swear, test lawyer about giving this case to the truth, something out.
I do. Scott Almond with SWD Architects. Currently, the, what we're proposing is the building will have to come down to meet what the owner is desiring for the number of units.
That is the old dairy you're referring to?
That is correct.
Yes.
Councilman Levisay.
Would, you may happen to know, was, were these two developments part of the overall plan from the beginning when this initial building was put in place?
No, no, they were not. This was, this was an after the fact that as they opened and started conducting business, they saw a need that they could have introduced more independent living and create more of a, almost a single-family resident type, you know, the unit for, to give an option to the residents for those that aren't ready to be in an apartment style.
So, the owners that you work for, they own all of this property here, east of Napoleon and south of whatever that is already mine's?
They are, they are partial owners of that.
Partial owners, yes.
Anyone else? Councilman Culpepper?
I just want to make sure I understand properly. The access to both of these sites will only be through the existing access to Parkway.
That is correct.
So, it will, in actuality, be part of that entire development. There will be no, no drives?
There is a common drive on the, on the south lot that serves a commercial building that's currently there, and there's access through there as well.
All right, thank you.
But the, Mr. Mayor, but the, the drives that are exiting are not going out on ADP, Adams Dairy Parkway, correct?
That, that is correct.
They're going out to Napoleon.
They will be going to Napoleon.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilman Fowler.
Well, to Jerry's original question, I understand that the original Adams Dairy, the dairy itself has to come down and everything with this project, but, you know, if our Historic Preservation Committee could get together and maybe do a little something for it, I mean, or direct where it used to be, or a monument or something out there would be, you know, be good to see something like that, so you know where the original location was.
So, will you note that to maybe the owners?
We could. I'll bring that up to their attention and see what we might be able to do.
Okay. Did we need to get an address and all, what you're swearing in? You didn't mention.
Oh, right, I mean, you may have addressed.
It's Scott Almond. The company address is 315 Nichols Road, Kansas City, Missouri.
Any other questions? Not, thank you. Anyone who would like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to?
I apologize. I had no intention of speaking today.
Is this in support of or opposition to?
Sorry, swear, test lawyer about giving this case to the truth, something out.
Yes, sir. Did I hear that this development would destroy the Adams? I mean, that's a city landmark. That, that's Blue Springs. It's a landmark. We got a road named after that, and I like people to make money. I like people to have investments, but jeez, Mr. Mayor and City Council, are you really want to tell the people of Blue Springs that some developer came in, wants to make modifications, and tear down a Blue Springs icon? That's why we named the street.
Well, if you look at it, it's not so iconic when you drive out there and take a look at it.
Please.
There's been, there's been some issues with that building because there was nobody to keep it up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, but on the other hand, I'd rather it crumble down than be used as a development, and if it does crumble down, let's put some kind of a monument up, say, hey, at this place stood the original Adams Dairy. I mean, it's an icon. It's Blue Springs.
I think that was a suggestion from Councilman Fowler that...
Yeah, a picture of monument out there that says, you know, it used to be this location. That wasn't, it was a destination location. That's why it's got a street named after it, yeah, so...
Yeah, so he did suggest that, and our architecture firm is going to take that back to the owners.
All right. Well, I'll be happy to, any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, but certainly, we want that to be a use for people that are still alive, and they can use that, especially as you start to age like me. We're going to need those facilities for people.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you, Councilmembers.
All right, thanks. All right. Anyone else? Not? Close this public hearing. Let's go to item Number Seven. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4511, an ordinance rezoning property from SO, ADPO, Service Office, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay, and GB, ADPO, General Business, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay, to MF10, ADPO, Low Density, Multifamily Residential, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Levisay.
Yeah, I, part of this may be my ignorance of the project, and, again, didn't get a chance to watch the Planning Commission meeting. I do have some concern and a bit of an issue with continuing to rezone this segment of the property. I know it's not, doesn't have Adams Dairy frontage, so I can see why some of the logic came, but I do recognize there is that current Service Office building there on already mine's. I think it would be appropriate to have some extension of that to the area that's currently zoned, that purple that's still currently zoned Service Office. I think those properties that do have Adams Dairy frontage right there on Napoleon on the south side have been designated for some office building. You see that sign that was there for a long time, said, "Your Sign Here," and, you know, you could put your company's name there, and I think it would still be appropriate to continue to do that. So, while this wasn't a part of the original project, I don't see the continued benefit in adding the property that he's suggesting. I think the site as it currently exists with the senior housing is appropriate, and I would rather see this continue to develop as maybe Service Office or some additional general business than rezone it multifamily and continue with this development. So, that's, that's my personal opinion, and that's probably how I'll be voting tonight.
Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Councilman Culpepper.
Just to speak to that, I understand what Councilman Levisay's saying. In ordinarily, I would concur. At this point, though, with it being a single entrance and becoming part of that overall, and I know that they are booked and overbooked and have a waiting list, so I think I will go ahead and vote in favor of this just because of that.
Anyone else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
No.
All right. Second reading.
Second reading of Bill Number 4511, an ordinance rezoning property from SO, ADPO, Service Office, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay, and GB, ADPO, General Business, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay, to MF10, ADPO, Low Density, Multifamily Residential, Adams Dairy Parkway overlay.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
For the discussion, Councilman Edmondson.
This is for Mr. Allen. Since these are private drives, do we have the ability to maybe restrict on-street parking to make sure we have adequate clearance in case of emergency or fire equipment need to go into that area? It seems like sometimes when we get into those private drives, they can narrow up really quick.
Your Honor and Councilman Edmondson, are you referring to parking in those private drives, or are you referring to like on Napoleon?
Looking at the streets, not necessarily the driveways. I'm talking about the streets. I believe, I thought I understood you say they were private drives.
Private drives are correct, are located coming into the development this way, back around, I guess, back around this way. So, you're saying restricting parking along those drives?
That's what I was wondering, is if, if it's not restricted, then if you, I know they have garages, but, I mean, if you start getting some people parking out on the streets, then that does restrict access to emergency service trying to get back into that area. And since I would assume that this is going to be more of a seniors facility, chances are there may be more calls in that area. And since I would assume that this is going to be more of a seniors facility, chances are there may be more calls in that area. I'm not trying to make it sound bad, but I'm just questioning that.
It's something we will certainly work with the Fire District to ensure that there's adequate access for emergency vehicles as well. Again, this is the Plan Development Concept Plan, and there will be a Plan Development Final Plan, which will go before Planning Commission, so it's something we can certainly address at that time as well.
If you could take that back, my concern, I would appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely.
Anyone else? Councilman Fowler.
Yeah, Your Honor, so I think the developer mentioned that it's in, it's in concert with the facilities that's already there. I guess it's the same ownership, be the same leadership that's going to be, so we should expect kind of the same theme that we've already seen. Okay, so I think they've been very successful, and as Councilman Culpepper said, there are people waiting in line to get in to that housing area, so I trust it'll be a good, good addition to the area.
Do you have your hand? I'm Councilman Culpepper.
No, I'm blank.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levise.
No.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried with the vote of six to one, given ordinance number 4680.
Next introduction, Ring of Bill 4512.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4512, an ordinance approving the villas at the Parkway Plan Development Concept Plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4512, an ordinance approving the villas at the Parkway Plan Development Concept Plan.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levise.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4681.
Next, we'll accept a motion to continue the public hearing on a Plan Development Concept Plan for Eagles Ridge and rezoning of St. Mary's Second Platte.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Next introduction, Ring of Bill 4513.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4513, an ordinance amending Section 102-280 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to establish and clarify the number, the appointment, and the qualifications of voting members, and to appoint liaisons of the Development Advisory Commission.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levise.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4682.
Brings us to a merril announcement. Certainly, our hearts and heartfelt thoughts and prayers goes out to the school resource officer from Lee Summit that was killed over the weekend being an innocent bystander in West Fort. I saw the news today that I think he had only, Lee Summit's been in school maybe two or three days and said he was already bonding with the kids and establishing relationships, so just shows you, you just never know when somebody's going to do something stupid and then start shooting, and I guess there was also a young lady that was wounded, but she lived and, because once the trigger is pulled, there's no stirring wheel on that bullet. And it could land and somebody like this school resource officer could be killed. Thoughts to ponder comes from Calvin Coolidge, and I quote, "Patriotism is easy to understand in America. It means looking out for yourself by looking out for your country," end quote. Don't have any visitors appearance forms, so we will go straight to adjournment.
Do you want to remind the public of the meeting tomorrow night?
You want to continue? You just did.
The town hall meeting tomorrow night, it will be on Facebook, it'll be held at Cordell Mason, and we'd love to have as many people as possible there. We'll talk about what we're developing, what we're looking at, what the public would like to see, and answer any questions, so we hope to see people there.
Who's going to be there?
Six o'clock. It'll be representatives from each of the districts, plus Your Honor.
Oh, okay. Six to seven tomorrow, be there. If you can't be there, be there through Facebook. Now, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? We adjourn.